We will call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did receive a message from our clerk late this afternoon. She had come down with some nasty stuff a couple of days ago and was not feeling well enough to be here. So we do need someone to act as clerk for the meeting.
I nominate trustee Bills.
Support.
So we have a motion by Smith, support by Thering for trustee Bills to be our temporary clerk tonight. Are you okay with serving?
Yes, sir.
Any other nominations? All in favor of trustee Bills being clerk for this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Hold call.
Please.
Trustee Thering.
Here.
Supervisor Milky.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Trustee Bills here. Clerk Cody and Treasurer Rice are excused.
Thank you very much. We have our agenda in front of us. Happy to entertain any motions regarding the agenda.
Motion to approve. Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Brown. Any discussion? Just a note for the audience, if you don't know, Sheriff May was just grabbing their, oh, you're getting it for everybody else. Any other discussion on the agenda approval as presented? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda passes unanimously. We have presentation section tonight, and if Administrator Frost would allow me, we have some other elected officials here tonight, and I just want to open the floor up and allow you to introduce yourself. If you have any comments, feel free. You don't have to. I just wanted to provide the invite. We have an awesome audience tonight, a bunch of leaders from our community, and I appreciate you being here. Seeing no one coming forward, though.
Well, I'll say, Steve Swainy, District 6, so not pleasant in Union Township. We're always happy at the county to have a Union Township representative at the meeting. Those done before trustee Bills know, and trustee Smith is doing it. It's very nice and acrimonious effort there, so I'll try to do my best to be very welcome.
Well, good. You know, the purpose, of course, is they have to report back to us, right? And keep us all informed so that, you know, if we went to every meeting that was in the county, then we'd never have any time for our families either, so we kind of split that role. With that, Administrator Frost, I'm really excited you're here tonight. The floor is yours. Administrator is your proper title, correct?
Administrator Controller.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, my apologies if I short circuited that.
It means something. Right now, I'm not sure the congratulations are in the right order for that, but it does, it does mean something. Controller means that the general ledger is held in admin instead of the treasurer's office, is where sometimes it is held in other counties, so that's the difference. Thank you. I'm Nicole Frost.
Thanks.
Isabella County Administrator Controller. In a very difficult position, as you might understand, with our 2.5 mil operating levy request. That's on the February 27th ballot. So I don't have a fancy presentation to show you today. Really, I thought the best thing would be just to come and tell our story, so you understand how we got here. And if there's any questions on your mind about what we're doing, or after I'm done, how we got here. There's some popular questions about, so I won't be offended. Please don't think that any question's unfair. That's why I'm here. Have a fantastic relationship with your township manager and a few of your township trustees, and a nice relationship with supervisor as well. So thank you for having me. Thank you to your sweet hearts for letting you go tonight. And we'll let you get back to them soon. So where do we start? Really, really proud of the seven commissioners that we have that represent the county, because they really have pushed for what's, what has ultimately led to a lot of understanding about county finances. This board has really pushed for long-term financial forecasting. That came out of, that was kind of born from the work we did with the USDA on our loan for the sheriff's office and correctional facility. I think everyone knows, we borrowed forty-one and a half million dollars for a forty-year term, which is fantastic, at a two and an eighth percentage rate, 2.125%. It's literally the brightest spot in our long-term forecast. The day after we locked in that rate with USDA, the rates went up to 2.5%. Would have cost another four million dollars. We have, the budget on the project stands at forty-eight million. When we started, the budget was about ten million dollars below that. But remember, we started in 2017-ish? Twenty sixteen with the feasibility study, right? That's always your first step, get the professionals involved. Look at the existing facility. Original parts of that facility built as early as the 1950s. Couple winters ago, I think it was two winters ago, time since COVID is funky. But we had a rooftop unit fail at the existing facility, and we were paying a thousand dollars a day to pump temporary heat into that building. The feasibility study from 2016 shows that the mechanical, the mechanics, mechanical systems in that building are failing. So suffice it to say, it was not a good legacy for the Board of Commissioners to leave the existing facility to serve for the future needs. It just couldn't. So we did take advantage of a great rate with the USDA in a great term. And that whole process led to, you know, the USDA is pretty particular about the funds that they loan, and they demanded from us a long-term forecast. And, and we really started to put pencil to paper at that point. COVID came along, and that's, that's really what drove the cost of the project up. It was, I think, at 1.60 million along the way. There's been a lot of reductions to finishes, to, it's a smart design. I know, and I know Sheriff's probably itching because I'm not saying the right buzzwords, and perhaps he'll, you'll have questions about that, and he'll have, he'll have his time to speak to that. But suffice it to say, this is certainly a facility that seven, seven of our leaders unanimously voted to move ahead with. So fast forward through COVID, through the increase then on the price tag of the project, through wages and benefits that have increased. MERS had a negative 12% year, two years ago, which took the forecasted kind of payment for our defined benefit pensions that was in the forecast and took that off of the map, out of our control. Wages, we've had to, as I'm sure you have, increased wages to, to retain and attract at the county. Our budget at the county is 73% wages and benefits for the general fund, so it's really hard to make cuts for pencils and paper, and you know, that, that just, that doesn't get us there. And one of your, one of your trustees, in their wisdom at one of our meetings, looked at me before the board chose to, the night that the board chose to go forward with the millage request, and they said, you, you can't cut that much out of your budget. At that point, we were looking at a four-million-dollar annual deficit. And then asbestos hit the county administration building. So we had some ARPA dollars left, and we wanted to do an HVAC replacement at the now fifty-two-year-old county administration building. So one of the first things you do in a building of that age when you're going to rehab it is the feds say you have to do a building asbestos survey. So fast forward to the day we get the sample results, and the sampler is saying, I advise you evacuate the building until we can prove there's no airborne asbestos in the building. So what we found from that sampling is that under the floors or above the ceilings, on all three floors, whichever way you want to think about that, the building is fireproofed with asbestos. In order to abate that, the ceiling grid comes down and the, the lights, all the ductwork, all the cabling, one side of every interior wall, so they can clean it free of asbestos, and then the rebuild will happen. About maybe a month ago, or six weeks, we were informed that, once they got in behind that one side of the drywall, the studs were in place when they sprayed the asbestos fireproofing. So that meant both sides of the drywall would need to come off in order to clean the studs. They're metal studs, so once you do that, the stud is essentially rendered useless. So all, all interior walls at this point are being removed. So cavernous, 27,000 square foot, we had, in our forecast to arrive at the six-million-dollar deficit, we had built in about two and a half million dollars for abatement and rebuilding. Now that we are engaged with an architect and have some idea of the cost, about $200 a square foot is what we're looking at for rehab, about 5.5 million. The abatement contract's about 1.3. So that's really happened after the realization of we need a millage request. So what that's done in the forecast is, in the forecast, gobbled up our savings to bring that cliff that we're facing to be in front of us, right? We're looking at ways to bond, to certainly spread that over time, so we're not, I don't think we can honestly come up with a seven-million-dollar price tag to quickly get this abated. Obviously renting space right now, and in a hurry to get back into that building. But there's a bright side to that, too. We're looking at maybe some, renting some potential space in that building when we do move back, to maybe have tenants, right? Some super exciting things happening at, at, locally, we're looking at needs and what could we do? We've even talked about a daycare center, right? Not that the county's going to be in the business of providing daycare, but because we do have a childcare fund, not what it's for, but because our employee base is now wanting and demanding that, we're recognizing, leadership is actually recognizing the value to employees of having that there. But the survey that MDC has just recently done about local childcare needs, there's like one slot for every ten kids right now. This is a huge, this isn't just Isabella County employees issue. So literally, we're, what about a daycare provider incubator in the county building? What a wonderful thing, right, to grow, to grow that and support that. And we understand that one of the hurdles to daycare is the licensing with the state. We do licensing with the state all the time, right? So we're looking at ways, not just to solve our immediate concern and our problem, but how can we help? It's kind of like the utility scale wind farms that are now in the county. I think to, to this date, the Northern Wind Farm has brought in over eighteen million dollars of taxes, not just to Isabella County, a couple million to Isabella County, but to, you know, other townships, to the, to the local schools. Certainly benefits everyone. I was just telling trustee Smith before the meeting about one of our, one of the things we do at the county that affects so many is our GIS database, right? If you go and fetch GIS and you look up your parcel, we've just put a new tool on there where if you land on your parcel and you go to the tool function, it brings up a millage estimate. So if you put in 2.5 or any other millage that you're thinking, you know, of considering, it will tell you for that parcel what the taxes would be for that millage rate on that taxable value. It's nice because people don't have to do the math, right? And forget to divide it by two for the cash value, or forget to divide it by a thousand for the mil, right? Those are hard equations sometimes, and you, you forget where to put that decimal, so it's a pretty nice tool to have. I would encourage anybody to check that out. Working hard on a cut list. Everybody wants to know what's your plan B. Leadership has chosen at this time not to publicly say Suzie and Sam and Sally will be laid off if this millage doesn't pass. We don't want to do that to our employees. So we will be, we will be ready soon after the, the vote to, to make that public if it's, if it's necessary. We don't want to scare tactic, but as one of your trustees knows, you can't cut your way out of a six-million-dollar annual deficit and still maintain any serviceable level of service, honestly. Every non-mandated service is on, is, is under consideration. Should have thought of a happier note to end. I will, I will. I talked about this that day that I referenced. This is hard. This is, this is a hard day. This is, this is, these are hard times, obviously, for the county. The need is great. I have over now eighty-six years of public service in Isabella County from my immediate family. I want to see this county succeed. And, and I'm here to answer any questions you have that you can help tell our story, help clear the air. It seems like a lot of conversations we have that start out a little sparky end with a lot of education. I can't tell you how much education has come from this, regardless of what happens, February 27th.
So if I may, Commissioner Angler, as I mentioned earlier, comes often. He's our representative for most of Union Township, not all. I get that, Steve. But I think it was the last meeting, he spoke about this issue, the millage request and why, and his perspective on it. And one of the things that he brought up that touched me was the, you mentioned mandated services. And he said that there's over, about 600, I think, mandated services that the state has on you?
It's actually closer to 1,500. It's, it's, actually, it's right here. What a nice lead-in. I should pass this out. This is a mailer that got sent out, and all the facts. It talks about legally required services, state mandates. Probably some federal mandates in there, too, maybe, but. City statutory mandates, 170. Township and village statutory mandates total 214. And at the county level, 1,493. A lot of that, I will say, maybe not quite half, is community mental health and district health. Central Michigan District Health Department, right? So our staff don't, don't perform those mandated services. County general fund certainly helps to fund community mental health and district health. But I do want to be clear, about half of those are performed by those entities, which are not county staff, to be clear. Does that help answer your question?
It does. I just, it seemed to me, because I've gotten a lot of questions about the millage and a lot of misinformation's out there, and so I try to do my best to wade through that misinformation and provide clarity. But one of those was Frank's comments that I've shared. I'm like, you know, there's things you can't cut because the state mandates so much, and you just can't touch those things. You might be able to find some efficiencies, maybe, or who knows, but they're, you can only go after the non-mandated. And you mentioned that, and I think that's important for the public to know.
Correct. We're at the point now, honestly, the next exercise we are doing is a zero-based budget, where you start with those mandated services, and basically you, you start building that until there's, there's no more money. That's essentially the, the exercise we need to do.
Yeah, I get that. Trustee Smith?
Just a point, when you're talking about the pensions, and correct me if I'm wrong, you closed off pensions years ago, so that also makes the situation worse because you have accelerated payments that goes into a closed system. So not only did you lose 12% in 2022, but it's closed off, so your payments are higher than if you had an open system. So I don't want the public to think that you still are offering a pension, so that's why I just ask for clarification on that.
You, you nailed it exactly. All, all groups were to define contribution, more like the traditional 401K we have now, in around the turn of the century. All of them went by 2002. And, and you're exactly right, trustee Smith, that we have a closed system. And so it used to be with MERS, you could kick the can down the road, and you could essentially remortgage every year and not pay for the benefits promised and the timeframe that they were promised, right? And, and MERS caught on to that a few years ago and doesn't, doesn't allow that anymore, right? So it is a more accelerated program just because of, we are getting to the end. But that's, you know, I hear a lot of questions, too, about why only six years? What's, what's magically going to happen? Our pension liability isn't going to be gone in six years, but it's definitely, you know, going to, going to be lower assuming that, you know, a strong rate of return for MERS. But that, that will eventually fall off. That was one of the original ideas with helping revenues, you know, or I shouldn't say revenues, cutting expenses in the budget is looking at when that falls off. We built that in the forecast, and then with that atrocious negative year, that, that just inflates those, those payments. You're exactly right.
Trustee Bills?
I don't have a copy of the flyer, but when I, I got it in the mail, and I thought I knew everything, because I've been to all your meetings, you know, for years. But it said that in whatever year it was, 2002, you quit the, the regular, the, the old pension, and it says, "Most new hires don't have a pension." So that was misleading to me. I thought all new hires had to go to like the 401K system.
Absolutely.
So it said for most new hires, so I thought that was a little bit weird. I mean, I was shocked to hear, to see most. I thought that everybody was, you know.
Words matter, so that is interesting.
That's all I could, I already know everything else that I, that I know.
Oh, here it is. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Gotcha. Maybe it was just a...
Stupid dumb. Thanks.
Yeah, I think, I think Registered Deeds nailed it. I think there was a union group that, that had to wait to transfer for some reason, or didn't get negotiated or something. The good news is, too, like your forefathers, ours, didn't institute all that OPEC, right? That retiree healthcare and all that, that we have none at the county, which is nice. Our command officers get a thousand dollars a year towards a reimbursement, towards healthcare. You know how far that, that can then go, so.
Oh, that's big time.
And they have to retire out of the contract, right? So it's, it's, it's very minimal, which is nice.
So something I was gonna, before I knew you were coming, I had planned on making this part of my public comment. And obviously, as elected officials up here, we can't endorse or unendorse? Is there a better word for that? Millages. So I'm not speaking to that in any way. But I do want to speak to the misinformation that I've heard from a lot of public that has come to me, and even the paper covered it some. We saw a flyer that was linking two different millage requests by two different parties. And I've had a lot of individuals come to me and say, well, the county wants to do this, and then they want to ask for a pool, and disconnecting those is really important, because I don't think connecting those helps either, either millage.
Right.
Because it's misinformation. And so I'm assuming you've battled that, too, to a certain degree. It's just getting the facts out there so that people can make their own decisions. It's just getting the facts out there so that people can make their own decisions.
But that's our education that I'm excited about that's actually happening. It's amazing that the people that will pay that tax bill without understanding it. Please, no one be in fear of your taxes increasing thirty-eight percent should this millage pass, even in combination with those two millages. But the education that's happening, the, the people that are out county, if you will, who don't have the aquatic center millage, who are upset about it or why, why this or why is the county? It just leads to so much education of, of your jurisdiction and your millage rate and how taxing jurisdictions are separated. And I, I just, I love the fact that there's so much education going on. We've got links now on the county website. If you didn't know, to the, the State Department of Treasury, they have a great property tax calculator there. If you want to go, any jurisdiction in the state, any jurisdiction. So any of our townships in the county, any townships in any county in Michigan, you can go and say what the taxable value of your, your home is and it pops up the, the entire millage rate for you, right? Because you don't just pay a county operating lobby where you live. You, you live in a township. You live in a city. You live in a village and you pay taxes there too. So it's, it's wonderful education. That's why I said that these sparky conversations that start usually end with understanding now. It's a great thing that's happening.
I, I would agree that the conversations I've had have ended in a good place. But the fact that I keep getting them is, is, it's just, there's a certain alarm to that where, haven't you been paying attention, right? I'm glad you're asking the question though, right, of them?
Yes. I was with one of your members at a, at a meeting where we were kind of on the, on the, called to the mat, just clapping this out there and just now, you know, coming out with a surprise millage request. And, and your member really helped us say, no, the county, I've been at the meetings. The county's been talking about this for five years. You know, this is, the board, I think, is letting the voters decide of do we continue with current level of services or do we, do we lower our level, the level of services that we offer? Taxpayers decide that, just like when the board sends me in a decision that I didn't want to go in, maybe, or didn't recommend. That's, that's their decision. That's the way we're going. Taxpayers will decide this.
I appreciate you being here.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Other comments, questions from?
Thanks for the overview administrator controller.
One of the things we're looking at, save costs, potentially, right? That structure, looking at everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item seven on our agenda, public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding issues on this agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. Do we, we have, let the record show that nobody is connected remotely. But locally, we have someone here at least, so we'll open public comment at seven twenty-eight P.M.
All right, David, Steve Swainy. I live at fourteen oh five Greenbrier in Mount Pleasant. And I addressing you on new business. Item B, resolution of support of a state Michigan, tasting room permit for a new microbrewery at twenty sixty-five to twenty seventy-five South Isabella Road. All right, I'll tell you, I'll tell you a little bit about the project and then what, why we need the resolution and maybe what it, what it does and what it doesn't do. So I have two other partners and we have a purchase agreement on this property. They're two lots. And we also have a lease so that we can move forward to see that if we can get a microbrewery license for the site. On the site, there would be a microbrewery with a tasting room and there would be a small kitchen, so not a full restaurant, but some food. And because there's a tasting room, the Michigan Liquor Authority wants to make sure that the use of those lots is within the master plan and the ordinances of the local governance there. And so that's what we need the resolution for, is so that the Michigan Liquor Authority knows that, the Board of Trustees knows there's going to be beer sold on site at this location and it falls within your master plan for the area. What the resolution doesn't do, it doesn't do anything to change any of your process for the planning commission and ordinances. My partners and I have already hired a firm to do a phase one study and we're just started that process where we're going through all the ordinances and planning of Union Township to develop and some architectural drawings of the site, both outside and inside location. We do plan to have utilized some of that lot for Beer Garden. But we look forward to working with the Union Township in the future and developing another microbrewery in the area. On a different note, I wanted to say that for the county millage, there's a lot of information on the isabella county dot org website. There's Youtubes and also other documents that you can get all the truth about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think I see no one else coming forward. Is that correct? Yep. So with that, we will close public comment at seven thirty-one P.M. Excuse me. That brings us to item nine on our agenda. Just a note on appointments, we have that one opening. Tara Albrecht was stepping down from the planning commission. At this point, we don't have anybody to fill that seat. I've talked to Ms. Albrecht to see if she would be willing to stay on until we're able to fill that seat. And she was more than happy to do so. She just said, I can't commit to the three years. That's why I didn't sign up for the planning commission. But I would expect her at the next meeting.
Please so.
With that, we'll move to nine B, Board Member Reports. Trustee Thering?
Nothing to report. Next time I will.
Trustee Brown? Trustee Bills?
Nothing, sir.
Trustee Smith?
County stuff. I got to report to it. Well, I'm not going to steal their thunder on everything else they did, but a couple optimistic things that occurred. One of them being the Motorola milestone number two for the radio tower project, which the sheriff's department's been doing. It's a four and a half, four point eight million dollar grant. So it's not general fund. It's grant funds that is going to create better service for radios, for first responder radios in the big box stores in Union Township, at the casino and other locations. So it's a, it's a great project and congratulate you on getting that done and going. They're also working on, I believe, something, didn't take good notes on this one, I'm sorry, but there was a lightning strike at the nine one one center and they're finishing up the upgrades on that. Insurance paid for that, so that's all covered, plus the upgrade. So there was a couple of things there. Then they did some reassigning, restaffing of the Drain Commission office, where they did some, there were some retirements and so they redid some positions with there to save some money. And so a lot of other things, but that all is tied up in with the asbestos and everything else. I think that's ninety percent of their meetings and stuff, so. But I just want to highlight those couple of areas that I thought was really interesting and very beneficial to the county.
Yeah, that news about the radios is exciting. I've had many conversations with Sheriff Maine and the tribe and other officials. And I learned more about radios in the last five or six years than I ever expected. But I can really appreciate what they'll do for you, so that's, that's great news.
Is it operational now?
Please?
So this is the state of Michigan Motorola project, so it's a pretty slow project. So not yet. We've only had two milestones. The pieces, parts, widgets and gadgets are all being ordered and they're, and they're coming. The big Nicoya dishes that we need are not here yet. They do have some site work to do. You know, the, the good things about this project, we were able to obtain a shelter from Consumers Energies that they weren't using. The shelters run about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, brand new. We bought it for dollars. We just had to pay for the expense to get it down here, which was, you know, a pretty good deal. So that is here, where they're putting an air conditioning unit into it. That'll be onsite at dispatch as soon as they can get the slab of cement down. And I was told January, then I was told February, then I was told March. So we're still kind of waiting, but it's moving along. They said by the end of this year, we should have it up. It's kind of a multi-phase. We want to get that up. We want to make sure, as leadership, and you know, we got the director, Lori, in here, he was part of that. We want to make sure that we have this infrastructure covered, the hospitals, the box stores, campus, the tribal entities, in Union Township, all those stores. We want to make sure we have good coverage and they're telling us it is, but we want proof, proof in the pudding, right? We want to push the button. We want to be able to talk in the places we know we can't talk in today, which is both medical facilities, McLaren by Michigan, which is important to us and so forth. So when that's done and we're satisfied, and if we're not, we have the ability to put some exterior antennas on those buildings to beef that up even more. Once that's done, that next phase in that project, we're going to refresh all the law enforcement portables and mobiles outside the state police. They have their own pot of money for that, but ours are all at life expectancy end. They're still workhorses. They still work every single day for us. So we'll funnel them down to the fire departments and so forth that need them as well. So all around, it's going to be a really good project and we're excited to get going. We'd like it to be a little farther along, but it is what it is and we'll, we'll set patient until it's done, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you for your report. I have nothing to add tonight, so that brings us to Consent Agenda. Just to note, there are three commitments to some form of contract or another in there. I'm sure you all saw those, but I'm happy to entertain any motions regarding the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Bills. You had warrants?
I did. I'm only halfway through, but I see no issues. If I see anything, I'll, I'll finish after the meeting. If I see any issues, then I'll, I'll say something. None as, none as of yet.
Any issue with the motion?
Not at all.
Support. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving Consent Agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Consent Agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to new business, item A, Meridian Road Water Treatment Plant Filter Media Replacement Project. Mr. Stuhl dryer, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you and good evening, everybody and the guests out here. We are asking the board to consider approval of a bid from Peerless Midwest in the amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars for filter and media replacement at Meridian Road Water Treatment Plant. We do have the majority of the funds budgeted. I'll get into a little bit of that, more detail on that in just a moment. This project has been competitively bid three times. The first two times, we received no bids on the project. The most recent time we went out was in September of twenty-three. We received one bid from Peerless. We've worked with Peerless a lot on various things over the years. So we're comfortable with that relationship. The one bid we received, we are recommending that that be approved. Of the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, there is an allowance within that for fifty-five thousand dollars to address an item within the project that we really aren't able to ascertain the degree of refurbishment or replacement that will be needed until we take more things apart. So we did include that in our original bid specs. When the bid came back, it didn't include a component for that because Peerless said that they weren't able to provide that estimate until they got in there and took some things apart. So we went back to them and asked for a not to exceed amount, which is fifty-five thousand, which is part of that two sixty-five. So if we get in there and we don't need to do as much of that work on that component or we don't need to do it all, it could come in fifty-five thousand dollars less. The, and that components, I have no idea what it is. It's called an air wash grid. Ms. Smith would be able to tell you what it does if you're interested. The, this is a project that came out of our asset management planning program. We update that every five years or so. And this project is, is on that list for this year to be, to be completed. This is all part of ensuring that our account users, our customers are being provided with the service, in this case, water service, that is reliable, dependable, safe and will continue to be that way into the future. We do, I think, a very, very good job of maintaining our capital assets, repairing them on schedule. And that goes a long way in reducing long-term costs that a lot of systems bear. Be happy to answer any questions you have on this item. We recommend that the board approve it.
I'll make a motion if nobody has any questions.
Just a couple of questions. How often is this something that we should expect? I mean, what's the typical lifespan between this kind of rehabilitation?
About ten years. It depends on how much, you know, it's an iron removal filter. Could be a little bit less, could be a little bit more. This has actually been more than ten years. We've been kind of, you know, we wanted to do this three years ago. Yeah, we started bidding this three years ago, so. But typically, it's about every ten years that you would get in, change the media. The air wash, once added, there might be some work that needs to be done on that. But it's basically, you know, they have to cut a hole into this filter. There is a hatch, but it's small. This is a confined space. That's one of the reasons we had trouble getting bids for that because not everybody's equipped to do this kind of confined space entry. They will have to cut a larger hole into it, which will then be repaired after the work is done, and take out all the media that's in there, replace it. They'll be looking at all the components, maybe do some resurfacing or repainting in there. The air wash grid needs to be laid out and then a blower is put on that. Just because, talking about it, what the air wash does is it basically fluffs the media that's in there. So it helps with the iron removal process. That was not installed in the original project that was done many years ago. Our other filters at the Isabella Treatment Plant have that equipment and it works very well. It helps with the whole process of the iron removal. So that's what the air wash equipment does. But it's about every ten years for the media. They, they recommend it.
I think you half answered my next question.
Okay.
Or maybe all the way. I was, on the write-up, it talks about going out for bids three times and only getting one response. So my concern was, hence the first question was, how often do we have to do this? What other facilities are they on the calendar coming up to do this? How can we get better responses from our RFPs? And your, your comment was, because of the confined space, it was difficult finding responses.
Yeah, the first time we went out for bid, we, these are Tonka filters. That's the manufacturer. We actually contacted Tonka and got some companies within the state of Michigan that have done this kind of work before on these filters. And we sent that out to them, but that was right after COVID. And a few of them responded, we don't even, we don't have the manpower to do this work. Then the next year, we again sent it out to them. Some of them had the same response. Some of them said, you know, we're not, we're not even doing that kind of work anymore. And then the third time, we basically called Peerless and said, you know, they do this kind of work. They don't always do it on Tonka filters. They do it on some other kind of filters too. And they were willing to, to bid on it, so. Because they hadn't bid on the first two either, and they had the same situation. They just didn't have the people to do it.
So our other facilities are a different animal?
We have the exact same filters at the Mission Road shop, at the shop. But we depend, we're doing that project with the drinking water revolving fund. So that site eventually, the iron removal will be moved, not right away, but eventually it will be moved to the Isabella site because we're expanding that. We have Tonka filters at Isabella. They're, they're a little bit different, but they have... We have Tonka filters at Isabella. They're, they're a little bit different, but they eventually will need the media replaced as well. So you will see this again. It may be several years, but you will see it again.
Yeah, I was just concerned about the difficulty that you had getting this accomplished.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I really appreciate your tenacity.
Well, we have seen some breakthrough iron on the west side. You know, these are on the west side. We've had some issues with some breakthrough iron. You get calls from people out in the system. They're getting iron. Summit has experienced some because they're super vigilant on the water because of brewing beer with it. And so they, they have come up, you know, they've had some breakthrough iron. So. Number one, they're due to be done and we are seeing some breakthrough iron on this side of town. So. You might see us out there every once in a while flushing hydrants and that's off our regular schedule and that's normally why, because we've had calls that we're getting iron out. You know, so people are seeing it in their, in their homes. So.
See Commissioner Swainy paying close attention. Any other questions?
I just had one comment. I thought that, that memo from the project manager was kind of funny. I can't get anything out of anyone.
Well, I think they're experiencing a lot of the same difficulties we are. It is really hard to get suppliers and contractors. And, and you know, just to get information, when you, like, when you work with these suppliers, it takes them forever to get back to you and give you the information you need. If they ever do, you, you really have to stay on.
Yeah.
That's something a little new for us. We've, in the past, you know, we, they responded quickly or they wanted the business. Now we're seeing, they're just not responding as quickly. So that, I, he, he does have some frustration with that as well.
Trustee Brown, were you going to say something?
Motion.
I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
If everybody's all set.
Yes, sir.
All right. I think this is something that definitely needs to be fixed. I'd like to make a motion approval, approval of the bid from Peerless Midwest in the amount not to exceed $265,960 for the filter media replacement project at the Meridian Treatment Plant located at 2279 Meridian Road.
Support. Motion by Brown, support by Smith. Any comments? Questions amongst ourselves?
Let's do it.
Everybody's clear on the motion?
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Iron out.
That brings us to item 11B on our agenda, resolution of support for a state of Michigan tasting room permit for a new microbrewery at 2065 to 2075 South Isabella Road. Mr. Stuhl dryer, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you. I think it's already been introduced by Commissioner Swainy. Swanny, I hope, apologize if I mispronounced your name. He did a very good job of discussing this issue. This is simply to project our support, if you approve it, for the liquor license itself. There will be a whole separate process that the development will need to go through from a land use perspective, planning commission, site plan, all of that. So I don't have anything else to add to what's been brought up already tonight.
Do you, do you know if the applicant has had any conversations with a community director, economic development director regarding?
They have.
Master plan?
They, yeah.
Okay. I figured.
We're prepared to. The, the, the language in the resolution is touching on the things that it needs to. And there being, we can affirmatively respond to all those in a positive manner. So we don't expect anything negative from the Liquor Control Commission.
Right. I just wanted, we're not expecting any roadblocks from the, for the applicant at this point, from the building department and zoning department, correct?
I would not know that answer yet because that process is not started yet. And it won't start absent this resolution because there are no, that they won't do any, they won't move it any further without a liquor license.
Makes sense.
I agree. I, I just figured there might have been high level talks as far as.
I'm sure there's been high level talks, but I'm not.
Not.
Nothing official though.
What I know about our master plan and what I know about our zoning, I mean, that's B3 area? Do you know?
We have met with.
B5, isn't it?
Manny Rodney and, and the planning commissioner chair.
Mr. Squatrito.
Phil. Yeah. And the manufacturing license that we'll get for the microbrewery and tasting room fall within the ordinances. There, there will probably be, there's three lots there that are all, the zoning is appropriate for that manufacturing license.
Yeah, that's meant as a business corridor for, yeah, I think it's B5, which would. So that, that, that's helpful. Thank, thank, thank you for that response.
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt the Michigan Liquor Control Commission's local government approval resolution to support the Swanky LLC application for a state on-premises tasting room permit needed for a proposed new microbrewery to be developed at 2065 slash 2075 South Isabella Road, PID 14 dash 146 dash 00 dash 020 dash 00 and dash 021 dash 00.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Brown. Any discussion, questions?
I'm excited. We need a microbrewery.
Those are the exact words I was going to say.
We'll take any new business.
I'm excited too. And it's, it's nice to see, at least from a master plan perspective, it was to fill in business in that area.
Yeah.
So I'm excited to, to see the potential for that to happen there.
And not only that.
I believe two of the lots are vacant at this point, right? There's a.
I've also already sampled unofficially some of this beer. So it's very good. Just saying.
Well, you have a salesperson.
Any other discussion? We have a motion to approve the permit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item 11C on the agenda, consider increasing the amount that the township manager is allowed to make in a single unbudgeted purchase or commitment from 10,000 to 20,000 per policy governance 2.5 point 6. And this was, really came out of our last meeting. And with that, Mr. Stuhl dryer, do you have introduction you'd like on this?
Just a brief one. The policy in question that I'm asking for consideration to be amended is policy 2.7 point 7. That policy's, which was part of the original adoption of the governance policy in approximately 2010, currently states that the township management team shall not make a single purchase or commitment of greater than $10,000. Purchases over $5,000 shall not be made without timely notification to the board. This was originally adopted in approximately 2010. $2,000 in, or $10,000 in 2024 would equate to approximately $14,500 just to create equity from a dollar to, from a purchasing power perspective. The request is to amend that policy to read as follows. Will not make a single purchase or commitment of greater than $20,000. Purchases over $10,000 shall be made, shall not be made without timely notification to the Board of Trustees. This recommendation is not expected, not anticipated to degrade in any way our financial condition or our financial oversight capabilities or capacities. For point of reference, the Mount Pleasant city manager, and I recognize it's a bigger budget and all that, is $25,000. That's their limit for the city manager. For the county administrator controller, it's $50,000. And so the item tonight, for instance, the handheld, the meter reader component, $13,000. That would not have come before the board as an agenda item if this recommendation was in place. Because it is, we, it is fairly ministerial. It's on the consent agenda. So we think it will add not only some internal efficiencies. There is a component to this as it relates to our, primarily our department directors and first level management below that. We, we need to create flexibility for these folks to go out and do their job and do it timely and have the freedom and, and knowing that they are trusted to do their job. And if we didn't have these kind of pre-approval level and authorizations, the place would grind to a halt. And we think by increasing this, we are helping to facilitate that trust that exists between the employers and the employee without giving up the verification component, which comes with trust and verify. Be happy to entertain any questions anyone may have.
Well, I think the item at the last meeting is a perfect example of why this needs to be done because it'll make things a lot more efficient and efficiency pays.
Thank you, trustee Bills.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Let's share.
You're, you're up.
I made it first. Lucky me. Motion to amend the governance policy 2.7 point 7 by increasing the single purchase or commitment limit from 10,000 to 20,000 and to require that purchases greater than 10,000 be reported to the board in a timely fashion. Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Brown. Any other comments, questions? Trustee Bills, I put this, I blame, blame on you. So.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate, appreciate you bringing this up.
I appreciate it.
All in favor of the motion to approve the change to policy governance, what section? I'm sorry.
2.7 point 7.
2.7 point 7. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad you came tonight, Nicole, because we might have had a record time meeting tonight otherwise. No, it's okay.
We do have extended public comment coming up.
Yeah, oh my.
Good segue to item 12 on our agenda, extended public comment. Extended public comments restricted to five minutes regarding any issue.
Don't we have item D?
Oh, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
See, we're going to run long now.
You got greenie.
Yeah, I did. My apologies. Thank you for that catch. That brings us item 11D, and this was actually my suggestion to put it on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
I was going to skip over it. This is regarding the liaison assignments that we make as a board. And a good example of that, which has come up tonight, right now, is trustee Smith has been taking your spot at, at the county. And we have various liaison assignments, city, road commission, intergovernmental, tribal, et cetera. And I just thought it was a good time since it wasn't working in your calendar anymore and you were asking for someone else to take that spot that we'd have that discussion as a board. And now we're missing two board members tonight.
Well, really what, well, really what happened, if I don't mind me saying.
Sure.
Is I was talking to the trustee and he said, I wanted to do the county commission. And I said, well, let's switch. That's why. I wasn't trying to dump him. Let's not go there.
We're all very, we were fighting at another meeting about who gets to go to the county meetings.
Sorry, sir.
So we had talked about switching. I do the county meetings and she would do the intergovernmental.
How, how about we do this? Are there any objections to that arrangement that was just brought up? I didn't expect any. Okay. So how about, I, I'd like to have this discussion when we have a full board to make sure that what Lisa's liaison roles are, are working for her. How about if we make this particular assignment done tonight and we can just check in with everybody else briefly at another time?
That sounds fine, sir.
So I'd be happy to entertain a motion, to put a motion to appoint to county commission? And then I'm assuming you're talking about intergovernmental then?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Let's do a separate motion for each.
So I'd like to make a motion to nominate Brian Smith to be our liaison to the Isabella County Commission.
Support.
Motion by Thering, support by Bills. Any discussion? All in favor of appointing trustee Smith as liaison for the county? Say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Congratulations.
Thank you. It's an honor.
Yes, new face there for a while. Be happy to entertain another motion. We do need to fill our intergovernmental, apparently.
Make a motion for trustee Bills to be on our intergovernmental committee.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Smith. Any other discussion? All in favor of appointing trustee Bills on intergovernmental? That mean, you know, you have to work with me.
Oh, dude. Oh, brother.
I pulled my bow.
But you get to, you get to talk to Nicole.
All right.
Right. All, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir.
So if you don't mind, once we have a full board, I mean, it's a fairly quick conversation. I just want to check in with all of our board members, make sure that their responsibilities are working with their lives.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, now I finished new business. That brings us to extended public comment restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address public, please state your name and address for the record. Let the record show, we still have no one connected remotely. And with that, we'll open up extended public comment at 8:01 PM.
Steve Swainy again, 1405 Greenbrier. I just wanted to, I thank you for the support on the resolution. And I would be here more often, but I have to watch you online because I've got hockey on Wednesday nights and that's just more important.
Thank you for watching us online though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
I've got one watch.
I think I'd like to revisit, revisit item 11B on the new business. I'm glad you're here tonight. I wish you well in your endeavor.
I do too.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close extended public comment at 8:02 PM. Mr. Stuhl dryer, item 13 on our agenda is, is yours.
Thank you. And I just wanted to remind the board and the citizens that may be watching that Union Township is leading a a, I'm not sure what we call it, the care store, a drive for the items that they receive, which are mostly household-related items. We did this last year. It was a lot of fun. There was a lot of, we were able to go down there with a full pickup truck and with the donations that were made. And we're doing that again this year. And we are, as part of that, reaching out to the various big box stores and they often have processes that you have to go through to ask for their assistance. So we're, we're doing that as well. So you'll see that out in the lobby. And I just wanted to check, we're doing a email migration from something called Microsoft Exchange to Microsoft 365. It's kind of done by individual workstation. And as we go through that, we've discovered that until we tweak it a little bit more, some people may not be receiving emails. I've sent out a couple to the board in the last two days and just want to see if you all are receiving those.
Yes.
The policy governance boot camp, was that one of them?
Yes.
Yeah, I got that. Yep.
Okay, very good. And then the other item is, we're about done and ready to present to the board the results of the citizen survey. And so Dr. Center will be coming to one of the meetings upcoming to do that. She happens to teach on Wednesday night and she could make herself available. Her class gets done at 10 till 8 at night. She could be here by 8 o'clock. Agenda, your meetings start at 7. Presentations are normally, you know, at the top of the agenda. So just wondering if you. the top of the agenda. So just wondering if you all would be okay if we try to manage the agenda to allow her to get here. And then depending on how big or small the agenda is, uh, it would be like right now when, you know, she would be coming. So it's possible if there's only a item or two on the agenda that there might need to be a little recess.
Well, maybe, maybe Commissioner Swainy could bring some samples. I'm just saying. I don't know.
So if you're okay with that, then I'll work with her to accommodate that.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one question on your comments, sir. What are the date parameters for the care drive?
It ends, I want to say March first.
I believe it's March first.
Thank you.
Couple weeks to go. That brings us to item fourteen on the agenda, final board member comment. Uh, trustee Smith.
I'd just like to commend the county. Um, after going to the meetings, I made the last meeting in December, uh, the night that they had to adjust the resolution, and was on the call with their attorney and doing all the changes on there, and all the thought that has went into this, uh, process, and all the educational meetings that you've had to go to, uh, various township boards, various organizations. I just commend you for all the hard work that you guys have done, uh, in educating the public.
Trustee Bills?
I got nothing. Have a great day. Happy Valentine's Day.
I never said hesitation.
Well, I was gonna go, I don't wanna go.
Trustee Brown?
I like to see all the support. Thank you for coming to meetings tonight. I like to see the faces in the crowd. That's, that's nice.
Yes.
Um, and the support for the county and getting the real information. I'll, thank you, thank you, thank you for doing everything that you guys are doing. Appreciate it. That's all.
Trustee Thering?
I'm good.
Um, I want to express my gratitude, too. Appreciate y'all taking your time to be here. Um, Nicole, really appreciate, and I know the, the journey you're on right now is not easy, but, um, I appreciate what you're doing nonetheless. Um, and, and good luck to you and the commissioner, the county commissioners, and all the tough decisions you're gonna have to make at some point. Uh, one other thing, um, Clerk Cody, trustee Smith, myself went to the county road commission, uh, meeting, the joint meeting. And I, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the documents they gave us. Did you all got copies of these, right?
Um.
Okay, so I'm gonna want you to get those. So I, I asked our manager to put on a future, not-too-distant one, um, agenda for us just to kind of get a report on what, for the entire board, what roads are being looked at, recommended by the county, uh, have an opportunity for input from us. Um, so I just kinda, wanna give you a heads up that we'll have that on the agenda.
Thanks.
Felt it was useful for all of us.
I was unable to make a daytime, you know, meeting. It's like, dude.
Well, good. You'll get debriefed then, proper.
Yeah.
Uh, with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Brown. I'm assuming no debate. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned at eight oh eight P.M.